Good evening Glendale and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Brotman.
Here.
Karpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian. Mayor Astadrian.
Here, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tongwa people. As we near the end of Black History Month, I would like to read a poem by Nikki Giovanni entitled "Black History Month." If Black History Month is not viable, then wind does not carry the seeds and drop them on fertile ground. Rain does not dampen the land and encourage the seeds to root. Sun does not warm the earth and kiss the seedlings and tell them plain. You're as good as anybody else. You've got a place here too. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the February 18th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on February 15th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next are Presentations and Appointments. Item A is a notice. There will be no City Council meeting on February 25th, 2025. The next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on March 4th, 2025.
All right. Next?
Next are nominations and appointments. The first nomination is Alec Bartrosov for Transportation and Parking Commission for C2 which is vacant. The nomination is by Brotman and Astatrian made on 2/11/2025. Next is Alex Fay for Glendale Water and Power, C2 replacing Kedikian. The nomination is by Brotman and Najarian. The nomination was on 2/11/2025. Next is Daniel Paul, Historic Preservation Commission for C3 reappointment of Paul. The nomination is by Karpetian and Brotman made on 2/11/2025. Next is Talin Shahbazian, Transportation and Parking Commission, C3 replacing Boston. Bonston nomination made by Karpetian and Brotman on 2/11/2025.
All right. Do you have a motion?
I'll move the list.
Before you move, I'm okay with everyone except Mr. Bartrosov. I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we?
Move all of them except for Bartrosov?
Yeah, let's first move the, there were four? Yeah, there were. So we'll move.
There were four nominations.
We'll move the three other than Mr. Bartrosov.
Second.
Roll call?
Council members Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astadrian.
Yes.
And I'll move the nomination of Alec Bartrosov.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Council members.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Yeah, I'm sorry, just briefly. I won't be voting for Alec to be on the Transportation and Parking Commission. It's not that he doesn't have a background. He's got a significant background in transportation. I just don't, I really am at odds with some of his positions involving bike lane, let's say aggressive bike lane advocacy, advocacy for the North brand bike lanes. And it's nothing personal, but I do think we need to bring, in everything that we do, bring some balance to our commissions so we're not packing them with aggressive advocates one way or the other on any of the issues. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move the appointment.
It was already moved and seconded.
Oh, already, already.
All right. Roll call?
Council members Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
No.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Mayor Astadrian.
Mr. Alec Bartrosov and I don't always agree. And I think that's healthy to have, so that's a yes for me.
Next are consent items including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call?
Council members Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astadrian.
Yes. Next item? We're on a roll, come on.
Next are City Council and staff comments.
Do my colleagues have any comments?
I have a quick one. Could you, just kind of a cultural plug that I want to make. Could you put up that image? I want to make a plug for the Antaeus Theater and in particular for a show that I went to just a couple days ago, Twelfth Night. They do great work at the Antaeus, as anybody who's gone there knows. Even if you're not a Shakespeare aficionado or you find Shakespeare kind of difficult, this is actually, you almost don't need to understand every sentence, which I clearly didn't. It's a lot of fun. It's hilarious. The acting is amazing. Yeah, it would probably be good to read a little synopsis before you go in, but you don't really need to. It's a lot of fun. So I encourage people to see this and really to know about the Antaeus because they do really top quality work right here in the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
All right.
Comments, council comments? I do. And it's regarding, and I promised I wouldn't make a big thing about this, but this is just, I promised the mayor I wouldn't. This is just by way of explanation. At one point, we believed we were going to have a discussion on the mayor's selection ordinance today. The mayor's prerogative was not to hear it, and I told her I would not object to that. I do believe there are some items in the ordinance that need to be, that could be cleaned up, and I think that the entire council could get behind. I also believe that absent a special meeting, we wouldn't be able to make any changes before the next selection process.
Councilman Najarian, we wouldn't be able, it would be challenging if not impossible to make those changes so that they would be effective by the time of the next mayor selection. So we have, March 11th would be the last day the council could adopt changes, and so backing that into that date. The plan had been all along to bring a report to council, get direction, and then bring you an ordinance. Without today's meeting, as you note, it would be difficult unless council has a special meeting.
Okay. And as, as we've seen, certain, certain courts have determined the selection of the mayor under our process to be a legislative act, not a quasi judicial act. It would still bestow upon the council broad discretion on that mayor's selection opportunity to act as a legislature without the tighter constraints as acting, of acting as a quasi judicial body. I don't know if everybody understood that, but anyway, that's, that's.
Do you want to say it and?
I mean, basically, basically even without changing the ordinance, the council can still have wide discretion as to who they select as mayor. I do hope that at some point, we will be able to make some changes that everyone can agree on, some language that makes it a little more clear at a future date whenever the mayor or the next mayor believes it's appropriate.
So, since you've brought it up, I do need to clarify. I've always seen that policy as it's written now, as a non-policy policy is what I keep calling it, because there's an exit clause in there. My positions on how that policy actually really needs to be changed to make sure that it's equitable, both to individuals that are newly elected and some potential other cleanup language, which I think is written in negative light when you do use the exit clause. I look forward to that discussion. Without going into detail, because it has been a closed session item, we are waiting for some issues to be resolved with respect to the lawsuit that was filed by Mr. Najarian last year. And so my hope is that we can have that discussion at a time when we're, we've settled that, that other party.
That's all, thank you.
All right. Okay, anyone else?
Mayor Astatrian, we have Sean Arce from Senator Sasha Perez's office.
Carlos.
I meant Carlos, sorry. My apologies.
Well, I had his card. I was gonna read that we have a very special guest with us today. Our newly elected state senator Sasha Perez from the 25th District has, we have his, her field representative or district representative, Carlos Arce, who's gonna be introducing himself and give a few comments on behalf of the senator. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. Nice to formally meet you all and to introduce myself. My name is Carlos Arce. I am the new district representative for State Senator Sasha Rene Perez. A little bit about myself, I previously served three years for the State Assembly, also serving South Glendale for the Assembly. So it's gonna be a pleasure to continue working with you all and the staff of Glendale. A little bit about the senator right now, she was appointed Chair of the Senate Education Committee by pro tem Mike McGuire. She is also on the committees for Budget, Budget Sub 1 on Education, Environmental Quality, Human Services, Public Safety, Joint Committee on the Arts, as well as Affordable Work Group. For any future legislation inquiries that you may have, anything that you do ask for in regards to our office, feel free to reach out to me directly, and I will correspond with your city, not only you guys, but the staff as well. Yeah. Pleasure to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, next.
Next are community event announcements. Three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general or oral communication subject to the three minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Astatrian, we have four, five speaker cards on this item.
Let's do this.
The first speaker is Eddie Minasian. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Mr. Minasian.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Eddie Minasian. I'm the president of the Glendale Association of Realtors. I have with me Armin Avadian, Anet Garivian, and our government's association directors.
He's right there.
Oh, right there. Greg Astorian. Tonight, on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors, we are proud to present charity funds to three outstanding organizations in our city. The YMCA of Glendale and Pasadena, which continues to be a beacon of hope for the survivors of domestic violence and champion for social justice. Star Kids, an incredible program that uplifts and supports at-risk youth through mentorship and education. And the Salvation Army, which has long provided vital resources for, to our most vulnerable neighbors, ensuring no one in our community is left behind. So if they have the representatives up here, please come, join us. And if you want to have.
Good evening, I'm Armin Avadian, the PR committee chair, and I have the pleasure of passing on these checks. Just to let you know that Glendale Association, through its volunteer Realtor affiliates, Realtors and affiliates, we have various events that we have throughout the year, from paint nights to Cinco de Mayo events, to bowling nights, to country, Christmas event, et cetera, et cetera. We raised close to $27,000 pure, you know, net income that we have for the charities. Some of the monies have been dispersed throughout the year, and the balance of three of these checks, we would like to actually do it in person, just to show the community that Realtors and affiliates of the Glendale Association of Realtors are really doing a lot of great work beyond going out there and living, making a living and making money, but we are also giving back to the community. So I'd like to just begin, in no particular order, YMCA of Glendale and Glendale Association is proud to present a checking amount of $5,517 to the YMCA. They were supposed to be here, but we will make sure that they receive this check. Absolutely. Yes. Okay. Secondly, let me go on to the Salvation Army of Glendale, who I know, captain is present, and this is also a check for $5,517. So Salvation Army, we're proud to be one of your supporters always. We always have been, we always will be. So that's a check I'm sure will go to an excellent use.
Thank you very much.
And the third charity is one which is very close to our affiliates, actually, members of our affiliates.
Well, I can't stop them from handing out checks, so let's.
Maybe, just a little extension on money being passed on to charities. The Glendale Police Foundation, basically through its STAR program, it helps the youth in Glendale, the less fortunate children in the community. So I'm absolutely delighted to present, we've given them some money throughout the year to help with the programs, and the remainder is $2,811 that we're passing on. So thank you very much for the officers and everybody else who does so much good. So, thank you very much.
And I think every Tuesday night.
Realtors and affiliates and others in the community, we actually sponsor dinners for these kids. Beyond the money that we're giving out, we actually sponsor, we volunteer, Eddie one day, Anet another day, myself another day, and we sponsor dinner for those kids every Tuesday night. So thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
I would note, first and foremost, thank you. I would like to note that we're gonna be actually up in Sacramento tomorrow and Thursday with some of the Glendale staff, and part of the requests that we put in to our state legislators is actually the cleanup bill for the Rights to Repair Act, which is something that I know the Realtors talked about, and we've talked on the dais here about how we make it easier for developers to be able to build condos. And so that's gonna be part of the conversation tomorrow in our state Capitol, so.
We appreciate that very much. Just unrelated to this, but just another thing that we've donated recently with the fires in Altadena in our neighborhoods, a whole bunch of people who were affected by it, who were members of our association and Pasadena Association of Realtors, we've donated close to $20,000 also to those in need. So just want to really put a plug in for that also.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Before you guys leave, I just wanted to thank you all for everything you do for our community. We are one of the largest organizations in the city. I chaired the PR commission, PR committee for two years, and it's not, it's a lot of work putting all these events together, especially the country and affiliates do so much for our association. And as you mentioned, on weekly basis, we raise money for Star Kids to have get togethers. You know, this may not be a big deal, but it's, as long as they're with police officers, with people who love them and they, they respect them, it's a great, great gesture. So I want to personally thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Next is Greg Astorian.
So thank you for the opportunity to address you. There is a slide, if I may have that. Other than what you just heard, the work that we do for our charities in city of Glendale, and by the way, in the last 20, 25 years, we've raised upwards of about a million dollars for the charities in the city of Glendale. CAR along with, we gotta go back. CAR along with, and this is a QR code for that, along with Realtors Relief Foundation in the past 30 years have given as community grants and disaster relief efforts close to about $40 million. And it doesn't stop here in, with this event, fire event in Palisades and Eaton, especially with Eaton that is closest to our city and so forth. They have allocated $1 million in micro grants, and you can press on that. And in fact, what I would like for folks to do is if you were to QR, if you were to scan that, it'll take you where you will fill the application. For everybody within the year shot of this broadcast, for your friends, for your families, and the people that you know that have been affected by the fire, either lost their homes and/or have damaged homes, in a small way, we want to step up. It's a two-page application. Within a day or two, they get approved, and they get a mini grant of $1,000 just for the pocket money. And we will do that for everybody that will apply, and we, our deadline is April 30th. With that, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill.
Evening council members, my name is Mike Mohill. Welcome back, Mayor Ellen Astatrian. I'd like to talk about the Pope of Glendale. I heard that name first from Councilman Arti Kasakian. He says there's nothing that he does at the Caruso that he doesn't get. And we've never had a full accountability of the Americana brand. The seat of Glendale bought up land, millions of dollars, and we have a bond to pay off that money. Instead of having Mr. Caruso lease the land, we gave him the land for free, free. I'd like to know how much money today is Glendale making it? Now, in April, you're gonna have your budget. You're gonna be thinking about it in this coming, next several weeks, but let's have some accountability. After all, the Pope of Glendale needs to be accountable to the taxpayers of Glendale. Not you, but previous councils, back when Jim Starbird was here, made the sweet deal for him to have his Americana. And we taxpayers are paying every year for the, for the taxes, for the interest on the bond, interest on the bond. So please, somebody, please agendize that item when you discuss it in next few weeks during your budget session. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Antanik Zarukyan.
Good evening. Excuse me, forgive me for not speaking in English. I'll be speaking in Armenian. And by the way, good evening council, my name is Rafi Kerbamiyan. I'll be interpreting in Armenian. How many times I have been in front of you? Regarding Section 8? For a few times, I've been back and forth? For the Department of Housing, and last time? I was promised that I was gonna get a call. However, no one responded. Since 2001? I've been enrolled, registered in Section 8. Numerous people? They have received, okay. And people who have even been to, came to the United States after me. There are people. They have quit, they have resigned. However, I haven't received any kind of assistance. And now the residents on Colorado? I got it. For $1,700. Excluded, of course, the bills. It is dedicated for low-income individuals. And $1,700, mine and my wife's Social Security or assistance barely makes it. You are all aware how expensive life, life is these days? I beg you, whatever your response is? Give it to me now. They keep telling me, go and we'll give you a call, but I'm not getting a call. No one is assisting. I beg you, one more time. Please, whatever response you're gonna give me, give it now. So I will not keep worrying about it. I am diabetic? Up to 500, my sugar level? Once in a while, the level goes down. Thank God, the physician has provided me with a device? That at night, it makes a little beep sound? So that I'm able to wake up and. So that I'm able to wake up and eat or drink something? Thank you very much.
Can you ask him Colorado or Broadway? Broadway right or Colorado?
Colorado right or Broadway? The new building? 900? My bedroom? One bedroom?
One bedroom.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Glanian, so I think time and again, residents come requesting things and I think for the most part, we know that staff is following up and we're under the assumption. And then when they come back and say that no one's reached out to them, I don't know how to respond to that. So I think it would be, at least for me, I would ask that when we have folks that come in with specific asks and we have a commitment that we're going to reach out to them, that the council receives an update from staff, just, you know, like put it as part of the process because I don't know what to comment back and I recognize the staff that would be dealing with that is not present right now for us to be able to ask. But I think it puts us in a position.
Well, I'll get a confirmation tomorrow. And moving forward, we'll keep council up to date as the requests that come in front of council.
And then the $1,700 that he's noting? That's based off of the brackets that we keep talking about?
I have a question. When they, when you win one of those units or whatever, it's awarded to you, don't they check the income level and make sure that you can pay the rent? Do you have enough income to pay that rent for $1,700? I do not know how could they qualify for two social security basically benefits that they receive for $1,700? It's, something is not adding up. So I think we need to look into it and find out. And I appreciate that. This is, please explain. Please explain to the gentleman, I can't say it in Armenian, but I want public to understand what I'm saying. But please explain to them that it's very difficult for us to respond on the spot. And I remember he was here once before, but please let them know, let him know that for sure someone will contact them tomorrow and go over everything.
I'm sorry, did you say council member tomorrow?
The city manager can elaborate on that, but they have to contact him either tomorrow or the day after.
Mr. Kusakian?
And I would just like to ask that staff bring to us perhaps, well, I would personally like to know, it doesn't have to come to the entire council, but I'd like to be briefed on when someone is approved for one of these affordable housing projects. What is the process that they go through if we can be walked through it? Because it is a significant benefit to some people to be approved for one of these projects and units that a lot of people are on the waitlist for. But I'd like to know how they are prepared to make sure that their finances are enough to pay for their expenses. Obviously, costs have gone up across board for a number of goods. We were talking earlier today about cost of eggs before we were in open session and having a conversation about that. And it's impacting a lot of people's lives. But, you know, $1,600, $1,700 for some units is not necessarily in the brackets of what we would consider affordability, especially when there are other people who are paying less than that and there are people who are paying more than that. So how is that calculated? How is it that someone who perhaps a household where both people are in either social security or supplemental security income, SSI, have to pay that much? So echoing some of the statements that were made previously in here, that would be my request.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm an 80-year-old man. I've been registered for 25 years now. If I don't get it now, how many years have I left to live? To get the section eight?
I mean, this is not supposed to be a place of debate, so I'm trying to limit it to.
Thank you.
I hope you did tell him that we as staff not only tell the job, but for them to notify us moving forward. Okay. Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Jackie Gish. And that's our final card.
Mayor Osatryan, city council members. First of all, I am speaking for myself and not for any organization right now. I wanted to talk about an issue of transparency. As some residents know, Councilmember Najarian filed a lawsuit against the city of Glendale and the city council because he was not made mayor last year. What many residents likely don't know, but is in the public record, is that the judge ruled for the city of Glendale on all counts and Mayor Osatryan is our mayor. The case continues to come up in the closed city council meetings and was on today's agenda. While Mr. Najarian was represented by his son as his attorney, the city of Glendale hired an outside counsel and hence we, the people, have been paying to defend the city in this case. The total cost is currently above $65,000 and counting. Only approximately $12,000 might be recoverable from Mr. Najarian, leaving us, the city's residents, on the hook for more than $50,000, not counting staff and council's time. Even though the oath of office that the council members pledge is only to uphold the U.S. and California constitutions, it should be to work for the best interests of the city's residents. Causing the city to have to use our resources for an unnecessary lawsuit is certainly not in the residents' best interest. I think all residents should be made aware of these facts. Hopefully, the city can get back as much of this money as possible from Mr. Najarian. Thank you.
Next, our action items. Action item A, Public Works, regarding Measure R Project's update continued from February 11, 2025 council meeting. One, motion approving new programming and modifications to existing programming to the adopted Measure R subregional program. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate Measure R regional return funds in the amount of $1,216,440 for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 11 Grant Local Match.
Mayor Osatryan, Member City Council, as was written to the record, this item was continued from last Tuesday. Mr. Organesian, our Assistant Director of Public Works, City Engineer, is available if you'd like an overview of the item or just want to ask him your questions.
I have a question. How much money is coming from Metro for these projects, Sarkis?
Councilman Mayor Najarian, for this request, the modifications is $5.8 million.
But the total Measure R subregional amount that we were allocated, it was like 90 million or something?
98 million.
98 million, okay. Do you know how that came about? Maybe Mrs. Gish can can learn a little bit as well. So this is when Measure R was being developed and this was a measure put before the residents. It had to come through the MTA board first. And the MTA board at that time was not in favor of such a sales tax increase bringing these funds. I believed and I saw that it was a good opportunity for the cities of LA County, not just the city of LA, to obtain funding for their transportation projects. And not only that, but I made sure, I was part of the old guard there, that we developed these subregional highway funds to form a type of equity between regions, which were not getting the expensive subways or light rails. So I'm happy to say and claim a role in bringing the $88 million to the city of Glendale in the Measure R project. 88 million. So that's not really a question. It's just some background to, I guess, you know, the implication has been that I'm not, that I'm sort of dragging the city down. I'm a net loss to the city. But I think if you look at those figures, and I have many more figures that I'll bring and give to anyone who thinks I'm dragging the city down, that I think I've been a net positive for this city, if not to the hundreds of millions, perhaps to the billion-dollar figure. Thank you.
All right.
I have no questions.
I have no questions either. Are there any?
I have some questions. I asked this question last week. Basically, this report is telling us which projects were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Which projects were completed? And which ones are in the works? And we have some new projects as well, correct?
Yes, correct.
So on the new projects, first of all, there's a phrase that's being used, multi-modal transportation. I think we need to be very, very clear as to what that means because it just doesn't mean multi-modal. It means also a class four or type four bicycle lanes, which requires removal of traffic lanes in most cases, not all cases. So some of this, one of these new programs, there's $5 million for a request for multi-modal equipment. And can you tell me what that means, multi-modal equipment?
Yes, Councilmember Garpetian. So in the context of this new programming project request, multi-modal is to better service all modes of travel. That includes pedestrian, bicyclists and vehicles. This new project request in the amount of $5 million is to modernize the existing equipment that exists in the city at certain locations that are substandard and need to be modernized to better detect all modes of travel.
And on, let me see where I'm at, on page six, would you go east California, from east California to east Garfield? On page six? I'm sorry.
This is Measure R. I'm sorry, maybe I have the wrong agenda.
This is the Measure R subregional.
This is 8A, right? It's Measure R, right? Okay, thank you. So on page six, there is a, it says locations, north, south Glendale Avenue, East Chevy Chase Drive to California answers, installing medians. Are you planning on installing medians on California or on Verdugo?
So.
From California to Garfield?
So that is related to the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 11 Local Match, that we are proposing to use Measure R funds for. This is four projects in total. The one you've identified is project three, I believe, roadway pedestrian safety on page six, is that correct?
Right.
And so the scope of that project entails installing raised pedestrian crossings and medians on the roadway subject to a engineering study. Those are the potential locations that have been identified as countermeasures in our applications for Highway Safety Improvement Funds. And so those locations will be further studied to determine if a raised median in this instance at the location you indicated will be warranted or not. And if it's not warranted, it will not be installed.
So this is East Broadway between Chevy Chase and Lukens?
Lukens, please.
And on Montrose Avenue between Pennsylvania and La Cressena?
Correct. And West Los Feliz between Gardena to South.
And Verdugo Road, east California to east Garfield? I can't, California to Garfield. So you're studying to see if there is a need for a raised medians there?
Yes. For improved roadway safety. Limit turns, improve safety of turns, improve refuge areas for pedestrians potentially crossing wider streets.
And would that come back to council for approval?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I recognize that some of these items were continued from the last meeting and we ended up in a tie and so that's why we're here. Just for future reference on the other items, I don't need an update. I'm fine. And my understanding is you guys have already had deliberations on that? Okay.
No, 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 one second. These items were not up for deliberations, upheld it. It was not, there was no staff report, it was on consent item. That's why they placed it on action item. It's not that we are here just to break the tie, basically. We want to have discussions on those items.
If I may, if I may. So it was correct, it was, the items were on the agenda, they were pulled from the agenda, there was a discussion and the vote was taken and there was a tie vote. So certainly if the council whether to have additional deliberation or move forward, but I just, I wanted the record to be clear was there was a discussion and there was a deliberation and there was a vote.
And additionally, can I ask a question? Every council member has an opportunity to confer and meet with staff regarding the agendas, agendized items prior to the council meeting, correct?
Correct.
Did Councilmember Garpetian need additional? Do you have that opportunity or did you forego that opportunity? I sometimes have forgotten it.
Well, to be honest, this agenda was pub, they posted the agenda on when? On Saturday? Saturday? Monday, the city hall was closed. I didn't have an opportunity, but I think the reason that it's posted on action item instead of a consent item is because we, I personally would like to have a discussion about these issues because these are very large contracts, very large dollar amounts, very large projects. People do not know about it. No one has been notified about it and just blindly just saying, okay, this is on consent item, let's move for, vote for it and move forward and it comes back tomorrow. That's what we said for Bicycle Master Plan. And still that is a draft Bicycle Master Plan and EIR is being done. These projects are being designed based on that draft Bicycle Master Plan that EIR is not approved yet. So I don't know, if you guys don't want to have a discussion, fine, but I want to have a discussion. I want to make some comments about them.
I mean, I think you've made more comments than anyone else has on this. So I think to say that you want to have comments and we don't want to have comments, you've had ample opportunity, Councilmember Garpetian. We can have a certain clarification from staff, but that's certainly how our process works. We can ask questions, get answers. Based on the answers we receive, we make a decision and we move forward. What is your proposal?
I don't have a proposal. This is an action item.
Okay, so, all right, all right, all right.
I'm sorry, one second. We have to get a report for it and we have to make our comments and voice our opinion. Otherwise, why is it an action item? And I want people to understand what these are. That's it. Because last time it was a consent item, the staff was not ready to answer every question. Some of our staff members, they were not even here. And if I, you know, I'm sorry if you feel that I'm saying too much about one issue, but that's not the case. Everyone has an opportunity to voice their opinion.
Mayor and council members, as I stated before Mr. Organesian approached the podium, I asked if he'd like a report, an overview that Mr. Organesian can provide or if he want to go straight to questions. He's still available if that's the council's desire. But we did have a staff report. Yes, you are correct. This was on the consent agenda as we have done so. This was on the consent agenda, as we have done so annually for these items in the past. But again, Mr. Organisian is available and willing to provide a brief report, if that's what you like.
I was just getting clarification on the process, provided that there was deliberation and a vote and a tie. And I was just carrying, I was actually commenting on my needs for this meeting, which are, I don't need the report or need to make comments, so.
Maybe Mr. Garpetian wants to convince you one way or the other.
No, no, I mean, I'm not here to convince anyone. I mean, we can vote on this item. I mean, this one, I'm okay to vote for, I move to the next one. But I'd like to have a report on the following items.
I would like to, you know, unless there's additional information, what I would like to do is move this meeting forward, provided that the four of you have already had deliberations on this. So I'm asking my colleagues, I don't need it, you've already had deliberations, I don't need to deliberate. So that's all I'm saying. If we can move this meeting forward is what I would like to do.
If I might.
With that, of course, go ahead.
I mean, I want to move the meeting forward also.
But you have lots of comments now.
No, I don't have, I, I don't really have many comments, but I'm concerned that there's some impression in the public that there's all this spooky stuff going on here. So I, it wouldn't hurt, in my opinion, for Mr. Sarkis Organesian, I always get, Organesian to come forward, because my understanding is, tell me if I'm right, that we have the Highway Safety Improvement Program, there are four projects under that, this is what I read in the staff report, four projects, there are traffic signals, pedestrian safety, and updating signs and maybe something else. And then we have three new projects that are being, where we're, we're programming them for Measure R funding, and those have to do with traffic signals, bike detection, and leading pedestrian intervals. I don't see how any of that is controversial in any way. This is all about safety and about detection and about signage. Can you just kind of run down what these projects are?
Yeah, yes. So Councilmember Brotman, the first motion as part of this report is to approve the new programming, which is, consists of the one project, the citywide multimodal modernization, equipment modernization project, which I already indicated what that project is about, upgrading old equipment in the city to detect multiple modes of travel. So that's the new project request, to the tune of $5 million. The modification to the existing program, which is part of the same motion, is to deobligate funds for the widening of the state route two freeway ramps at Mountain. Caltrans was responsible for completing the feasibility study, and the feasibility study determined that it's not feasible, so we're asking to deprogram $1.2 million for that project. We're also asking for additional $2 million to the existing downtown Glendale Signal and Mobility Improvements Project. We had opened bids on that project, and the construction costs had come in higher than the engineer's estimate, and so we approached Metro for the request for additional programming. We're also asking for a resolution of appropriation for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. It is a local match that we are required to provide, and we asked Metro if Measure R funds would be eligible, and they confirmed it would. And so we are asking for a local match to the tune of $1.2 million for four projects that are part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program Cycle 11 funds that we received about a year and a half ago. And so these projects are now going to undergo the preliminary design and stage and process, and it'll be determined whether certain project elements will qualify and will be incorporated into the final design. Once we have the final design, we'll obviously go through the proper means and measures, outreach, commissions, and city council for final approval of that project.
Okay. Page four, item two, program projects that are in progress. These are the projects that already have been approved?
Correct.
Or they are in process of being approved?
Councilmember Garpetian, these are, these are projects that have already been approved by the Metro Board.
By the Metro Board?
Correct.
How about the council?
Yes, they've also come before the council, respectively, at their times.
Okay, so, traffic signal modification on La Crosseana Avenue at Los Ron Shirley Gene, are they, that $4.6 million, are they part of the La Crosseana Avenue rehabilitation project?
Yes, this, that one is for the La Crosseana, yes, it is.
And how about the North Glendale Avenue Traffic Signal Transit Pedestrian Improvements Project, Broadway to Verdugo? Design in progress, it says. It's on page five, first item, $4 million. This is not approved yet, right? Because design is in progress?
The, the approval to use Measure R funding for $4 million for this project, that is already approved. And so the design is in progress to determine the design elements of that project, so that we can move forward appropriately, and any updates, again, will come before the proper commissions and councils and community for feedback and direction.
Thank you. That's what I'm saying. This is a little bit confusing, because, not, not for you, for me. Again, nothing against staff or anybody over here, but some of these items in this, in this report relates to the items on 8B and 8C. Like the $9 million North Verdugo Road, it says traffic signal and transit pedestrian improvement project, Canyada Fork to Honolulu, right? Where Canyada, Verdugo forks from there to Honolulu, and then there is one from Monterey to, to College and College to that, that fork again. So when you have all these items here, and there are three reports back to back, and they, they kind of interconnect, and that's what I said last time, it's like a web, you have to go from one to another to understand what it is. I just want to understand what you're approving, because I don't want to come back a year later and say, I'm not approving this project, then, you know, people will say, oh, you approved the budget for it already, why, why don't you approve the project? I want to make sure we are not approving a budget for a project that I will vote against later. That's, that's what I want to understand completely.
Yes, Councilmember Garpetian, as Mr. Organisian noted, under item two, these are programmed, already programmed projects, that we have executed funding agreements with Metro. So the funding has already been approved for these projects. Now, what comes to, after this, what comes to council is when the design and community outreach has been completed, after it goes to Transportation and Parking Commission, it will come to council for approval of the plans, if that's the council's direction. But the funding's already been approved, so you're not voting on these new fundings. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my brain around this. So you get the funding first for a project that the council has not approved yet. For example, North Verdugo Road, it's not approved yet, right? The design is not there, it's not approved yet. Some of the other projects that it's in these reports, they're not approved yet, but we have the funding for it already, for the entire project.
Exactly. Councilmember Garpetian, so when we, not just with Metro or Measure R, there are other funding sources, state and federal, that we apply for, having a scope of work and an estimate, and that's what they require. Once we get the funding, then staff can go ahead and hire consultants, who will do the preliminary design, also as part of the, the next two items, hire a subconsultant who will conduct extensive survey and get the public's feedback as part of their outreach. So we need to have some funding in place to be able to do, to carry out those items.
And even in all three reports, it indicates that any preliminary design follows the bicycle transportation plan. The one that's not approved yet is the draft one. But it's, that's, that's, that's the question that I have. We haven't approved that, that plan yet, but we have to follow it. There's an EIR going, being done, which may come back and say, no, half of this plan is not going to be implemented, or cannot be implemented, but we're still following that design to design our streets. And that is a problem, one of the issues that I have.
Understood, and the consultant and staff will provide those options to the community. Again, some, as you noted, some of these alternatives may not be feasible, hence the reason they need to hire a consultant to be able to conduct those studies and find out. And, and if council, or if this, items in the project are not feasible, or council decides not to move forward with it, the unspent monies will go back to the funding source for reprogramming.
Like we're doing with the two freeway off-ramp project, not feasible, getting reprogrammed.
Exactly. So Councilmember Garpetian, if I may, provide some further clarity, and it's not meant to create a spider web of problems with the subsequent reports. This is a general overview of our Measure R subregional fund, which we have a total of $98 million in. That was voted by the voters in 2008. There's a nexus that Measure R provided when these funds were approved by the voters, and that nexus was primarily to complete improvements that would aid in improving the transportation infrastructure of the highways, leading to the highways from the city streets and so on and so forth. That nexus definition was expanded further a couple of years ago to include multimodal and complete streets types of projects. So some of the projects you'll see that were originally nicknamed or named traffic signal modifications, because we were trying to improve the traffic signal infrastructure that leads to the freeways, to make it more efficient to lead and get to those freeways. When the definition was expanded, we took the opportunity to use that nexus to then determine that these multimodal improvements, that the council's priority was at the time for us to proceed with, that we use Measure R funding for that. So this report sets the stage for us going to Metro Board to seek approval to use those funds, to execute an agreement, to then use those funds to complete design studies, outreach, so on and so forth.
Let's, let's move forward with this item. I have a couple of questions on A, B, and C.
Okay, should I make a motion?
Um, we have some public comments on this item. Go ahead. Our first public comment is by Mike Mohill. Mike, you have three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. As a layman, I feel as if we have, we're putting the, the cart in front of the horse. Okay? The cart. We talked about having a survey last week on bike lanes. Mr. Brotman said he agreed with Mohill. Why don't we do that first, before we allocate any money, any survey, anything? Let's do that first. Let's put the cart or the horse in front of the cart. Because what you're doing right now, you're allocating all this money, and another thing is, if we're going to be doing matching to Measure R money, where are we going to get that money? You know, you asked the ratepayers of Glendale, you've increased our electric and our water rates. People are screaming in the community, why don't you take that money and lower our cost of our electric and our water rates? No one's crying to fix our roads right now. You know, again, I repeat myself, when the house is burning, you don't go out and you get drapes for the, for the living room. This city isn't hurt. People are starving. People don't have money. That's a known fact. And then you want to go ahead and spend money on roads. Our roads are just fine the way they are. No one's complaining, but they will be complaining is bike lanes. And speaking about bike lanes, has anybody here asked our fire chief or police chief what the effect of bike lanes will be on our highways? If there's an emergency, if there's a fire? I wish you'd ask the fire chief to come up here and give their, his opinion. He's the expert. I'm not, but I know what happened on Brand, North Brand Boulevard. Let's not put the cart in front of the horse. Let's get that survey out and see if the public wants it. You saw that in North Brand, 76% of the people didn't want to have bike lanes on that street, and you covered it up, city manager Ruben Colonian, till Mr. Nigerian brought it up. Don't mislead the public. Don't mislead the public. You have an opportunity. Let's do that survey first, before you do anything. And let's make that survey. And I'll repeat myself. I'll use my newsletter, complimentary, to put it in. And you can put any, you can read it any way you want, and I'll put it out to all my thousands of readers. Thank you. So this is the same thing on any other measure. Madam Mayor, please, don't approve, don't, don't make the 3-2 vote. I know where you're going to go. Don't do it tonight. You'll look better to the community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Jackie Gish.
Mayor Satryan, city council members, even though I don't ride a bike, or skateboard, or even surprisingly not, I don't use a scooter, I am still in favor of multimodal transportation, including cars, bicycles, and walking. I view Glendale as a diverse city, unlike when I grew up here, with people from various backgrounds, religions, renters and owners, people of all ages, and people with preferences on transportation. I walk often, drive sometimes, and sometimes have taken Metro or Metro Lincoln buses. I have also been fortunate to visit many countries and have never rented a car abroad. Instead, I walked and used buses, subways, and trains, and an occasional taxi or Uber. I envy the public transportation, as well as the many pedestrians and bicycles in these other prosperous cities. Those of you who are against bikes, bicycle lanes, and there was even a public commenter who was against buses, surprisingly enough, seem to only care that you aren't slowed down at all, or lose a precious parking space. But your comments express a lack of caring about safety for bicyclists, and possibly even about pedestrians also, because they may slow you down. Many drivers in Glendale are irresponsible, and speed and overtake cars in dangerous ways. They run red lights and stop signs, often nearly missing other cars, bicyclists, and pedestrians. We have to solve this problem and make our streets safe for all, cars, bicycles, and pedestrians. Bicycle lanes and street improvements are definitely needed in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Alan Dish. You have three minutes.
City council, good evening. My name's Alan Dish. I would like to begin with a joke from Radio Yerevan, the mythic Soviet Union station, where, you know, they respond in principle, yes, always, to a question. So the famous version is, is it true that Robinovich won a new car in the state lottery? And Radio Yerevan answers, in principle, it's true, only it wasn't a new car, but an old bicycle, and he didn't win it, it was stolen from him. So does something like this not hold for the Brand project? For example, is it true that North Brand project united Glendale in a time of political strife, with improved attitudes towards a sustainable future in transitioning to bicycles? In principle, yes, it did unite the people, only it didn't change people's driving habits, but rather reinforced them, as we saw with 76% vote. So people like bicycles even less, plus, they won in the short term by preserving the status quo, but in the long run, voted against the overall interests of the well-being of the community. So I'm sorry, I cannot go on in this direction, but it leads me to point two. The problem I see with outreach, of course, I'm for democracy, and so on, but it doesn't seem to be favoring bicycles. One problem is apathy, of course, general apathy. Then, the suburban ethics of privacy and seclusion. Then, in the Armenian diaspora, why not? There's the attitude of, don't go too close to power, don't participate. There is the other tendency too, but generally, it's keep a distance. Plus, most people, my old line, don't want to choose directly. They want the appearance of free choice, but they want to be told discreetly how to choose. So this brings me to the problem in general of the left today, which is that many immigrants... So, this brings me to the problem in general of the left today, which is that many immigrants do not want to change the system, rather, they want to succeed in it. You see what I'm saying? It's not that they want to come make the revolution or whatever. No, they want American dream. This usually involves a car. I will quote Fogelson's epic book called The Fragmented Metropolis, yes, where he quotes a visitor from a village in Armenia, 1980s, who, all the young people there have two things that they want, well, three. They want to move to Los Angeles, one, they want a house, and they want a red BMW. So already at that time, 1980s, and so on, 8B. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a caller, Fernando Roldon. You're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you heard me on the previous afternoon meeting, one of the things I mentioned to the Glendale Downtown Association was that we do need improvements in a lot of stuff, making sure that, of course, we keep our businesses, making sure that Brand Boulevard is safe and all, making sure that our lights are not congested, which they are. And bike lanes is not always the answer. I mean, remember what I told you weeks back, that some of those streets are being blocked using those walls and all, which is, of course, a clear violation of the EDA or my rights under the Americans with Disabilities Act when using access services. So what do I mean by that? That means that we need to improve a little bit better. And also, may I also remind Mr. Najarian, he's also part of Metro Board. What do I mean? Because we do have a system called a Next Gen, which I've been pushing, of course, in the surveys to make sure that buses, more buses need to be in there. So what do I mean? Basically, around the hillside, we don't have a lot of buses. Verdugo needs a lot more bus routes as well. So if we're going to go that route with Measure R, get that fixed first. Mr. Mohill, I have one quick thing to you. It's not about surveys, it's about making sure that we do the right thing. And that's my two cents on that, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Have a good night.
And that is all.
I'm ready to make a motion. Okay. So I will move, well, let me just look at, I think we have 2.
8A1 and 2.
8A1 and 8A2. I just don't have it in front of me. Okay. I'll move 8A1 and 8A2 then.
I'll second those.
Go ahead.
Councilmembers Brothman.
Yes.
Garbaitian.
No.
Kastakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Mayor Astatrian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is 8B Public Works regarding award of a new professional services agreement to Mark Thomas and Company, Inc., and appropriation of Measure R funds for the North Verdugo Road Multimodal Improvements Project and execution of an amendment to the existing PSA 8001984 with Mark Thomas for the San Fernando Road Beautification Phase II Project, continued from February 11, 2025 council meeting. One, motion authorizing the city manager or designated to enter into and execute a PSA with Mark Thomas to provide professional engineering services for the North Verdugo Road Multimodal Improvements Project in the amount of $1,572,625. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a contract amendment to PSA 8001984 with Mark Thomas for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project to perform additional traffic study, engineering, and landscape design services, and public outreach regarding pedestrian safety and street improvements on San Fernando Road and adjacent streets, increasing the contract amount by $254,915, and extending the contract time by 24 months. Three, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $9 million in Measure R regional return funds for the North Verdugo Road Multimodal Improvements Project.
Mayor, members of the council, would you like a report?
I don't. I don't know if my colleagues do.
At this point, no.
Yeah, I have a question. So Sarkis, this is a $9 million project?
Councilmember Najarian, it's a $9 million resolution of appropriation request. The expected total project cost is around $28 million.
Okay. And the $9 million is not coming from the Subregional Highway Equity Fund, it's coming from the local return fund from Metro, is that?
It's coming from the Subregional Return Fund.
Subregional return. So, I'm just going to speak briefly on this. This was, as you stated, this fund, the, well, the Subregional Return, okay, is slightly different than the Subregional Highway Equity Fund. We did change the Highway Equity Fund several years back at Metro. I think I was a co-author of that, if I'm not mistaken, to permit multimodal use of these funds rather than strictly highway use. And when I did that, clearly, I realized that there are very good projects for multimodality, pedestrian, bike, et cetera. I'm not against all bike lanes. I'm against poorly planned bike lanes. The problem that I have with these, as briefly as Mr., the frustrations that Mr. Garbaitian expressed, I share as well, in that we're providing funding, we're starting our way towards a design of bike lanes per the B Bicycle Transportation Plan, and we're not really sure where the community sits in this. But because the ball has started rolling, there's an inertia which leads us to create these lanes. And that's my problem, and that's perhaps an issue of timing. I expressed it last week. I still have those problems. But a specific concern that I have on this issue is the creation of the TAC, the Advisory Committee. I have seen advisory committees created that have gone completely off the rail in this city. So I want to make sure that any advisory board which is proposed comes before council. I don't want strong advocates on that advisory committee. I want normal people, aside from the technical experts which the city is going to provide, because we go off track. That's how Brand Boulevard, North Brand Boulevard, in my opinion, got off track. There was a big push for it. They didn't really slow down and see, is this the best way to design and to do it? Even though it was a pilot project, I get all that. But the point is, when we select this advisory committee, is that going to be you, Mr. Galanian? Or?
Councilmember Najarian.
Or the consultant, or who?
It'll be a collaboration between staff and consultant. I typically don't get involved.
I just want, I just want normal folks on there who don't have an agenda, either for bike lanes or against bike lanes, or whatever other improvements that we're doing here. Generally, these are safety improvements. We all want safe streets, there's no doubt about that. But that's, as someone who's going to be ultimately voting on this, as well as my colleagues, I really want to have an even, fair shake by the TAC. I don't want to be throwing, what do they say, throwing bare rabbit into the briar patch in this sort of thing. An even group that'll bring forth all the pluses and the minuses without an agenda to either kill bike lanes or put a bike lane wherever they see an open spot of pavement. That's what I'm looking for. That's not in the motion, obviously, but it's something that I would be looking for when this goes forward. The irony is, I'm probably not going to vote for this, but that's what I would be looking for if my colleagues do approve it. I would be looking for some fairness and balance on the technical advisory committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would hope that all of our advisories would be balanced. All right. Any comments, additional questions? Sure.
In a nutshell, this project starts basically from Monterey Road on Glendale Avenue and goes all the way up to Verdugo and Honolulu, based on the map that I had.
Correct.
Correct. Is there any repavement of the roads incorporated in this? The entire road is going to be, like, repaved, removed and repaved?
Yes, Councilmember Garbaitian, the entire road will be repaved.
The entire road will. Okay. So, and based on the report that I have here, the scope of the work indicates because this project is following that 2024 Bicycle Master Plan, this area is, what do they call it? This corridor is designated, it's already designated as Class IV Protected Bike Lane, right? Is it? And it says in here, based on the draft proposed bike network, this corridor is designated for Class IV Protected Bike Lanes. And especially on Verdugo Road, we had a similar project in the past, right, the road diet project that was appealed and/or opposed, and it was taken away. Is that, do you recall that?
Councilmember Garbaitian, that was before Mr. Oganisian's employment with the city.
Right. So, we had a similar, and at that time, there were less cars on the road, there were less traffic, and there were less of everything. The problem that I have is, these projects are going to be designed, and when it's up to 90%, then we're going to go to the community. And it says in this report, not on this item, the other, 8C, it indicates that that's the south of, maybe I'm mixing. Let's move on with this one. I don't want every project to be like North Brand project. I don't want, the community is getting tired. They don't want to fight every project, street by street by street, when we take traffic lines away and we take street parking away. They don't want to do that. So, I don't know what the magic answer is here. Is there a pause that we, is there a button we have to press and pause and find out if we do need, if people want this kind of projects, this kind of, because no one has ever called me, said, I want a dedicated bike lane on my street. And I'm a cyclist. I ride my bike more than anyone in this room. I'm not against bicycle lanes. I'm not against safe streets. Who's against safe streets? And every time you have an opinion, they say, oh, you are against safe streets or safety for all. That's not true at all. Let me ask you about the North-San Fernando Road project, the Phase II. It says 30% is already designed, right? Is it the same designer, same architect group, or same consulting group that did the Phase I?
Yes, it's the same consultant that did Phase I.
And are they going to kind of narrow the width of the streets, I mean, the lanes, traffic lanes?
So, for the, Councilmember Garbaitian, if your reference is to the San Fernando Road Beautification Phase II project, that's on page five, this has no bicycle infrastructure improvements.
No, I understand. Every time I speak, people think I talk about bicycle lanes. No, I understand, I understand. Maybe I asked my question the wrong way. Is that, is that Phase II involves reducing the width of the traffic lanes?
Not necessarily, but that hasn't been determined yet. That contract was given when the Phase I project was executed, and Phase II is just gearing up to begin. We're doing some additional improvements to Phase II that we didn't include on the first go-around, and so that's why that item is included here, specifically to look at narrowing intersections that have wide sweeping turns, and narrowing them and realigning them to make it a lot safer for all modes of travel.
I have a suggestion for staff and also our consultant. Please go talk to businesses that are on that stretch, the ones that are part of the Phase I. Go take a look at the center medians that we have over there. You can see the time marks on them already. We had an accident, I don't know, a while back, the guy hit the center lane because it was very narrow, and came back and hit another car. Very, very, very tough accident. Before you start, and that's an industrial area, we have Home Depot there, we have a lot of businesses there, they bring tow trucks there, before narrowing down the traffic lanes, I think you need to survey on the Phase I part of it, the tenants or the property owners that are in the Phase I part of this project, and see what do they say. I think that's the best, I mean, I can sit in Verdugo Woodlands, I say, I want to slow down traffic on San Fernando Road, but that's not, that shouldn't be the case before we do an audit or a survey with the current tenants. And also in here, it says, this project is going to relocating the bus stops to further improve multimodal transportation safety. Everything has to do with safety. They just put this, safety behind every word, to make a point. And circulation along Verdugo Road, this is on page three. And also, one other thing that's kind of puzzling for me, I didn't understand it, and that's why I wanted the report, was page three, 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, the last sentence, TCS also includes conducting a level of service on vehicle miles traveled analysis and performing a parking utilization analysis. Vehicle miles traveled analysis to see how much people in that area drive? Or what is the purpose of that? To see how can they reduce the street parking? What does this mean in plain English?
So, under the California CEQA changes that underwent a few years ago, agencies are required to use the vehicle miles travel analysis or VMT analysis to determine the impacts of a potential project, the environmental impacts, and the goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled on the roadway and to benefit the environment in multiple ways.
Vehicle miles traveled on the roadway to benefit the environment in multiple ways?
Yeah, less vehicles traveling, shifting to other modes of transportation.
Got it. That's the, that was the answer I was looking for. Basically, most of these projects are designed to reduce the, remove a traffic lane, reduce the street parking, push all the traffic in one lane to create unnecessary traffic so people will not drive their cars. And you want to get, not you, the whole movement is, to get people out of their cars and reduce the greenhouse gas emission. I think that's, we have to honestly say in this report that what the goal of these kind of projects are. And I don't know, I have news for everyone. There is no way, we have 200,000 people here, our daytime population is 400,000, and they all come here with their cars. They don't ride their bicycles to Glendale. So, all these projects, and that $9 million is in here, that $9 million that was in the previous report, that's part of this project, and that's why I was trying to understand how these, all of these are connected.
So, is it possible that some of us may not be interested in taking people out of their cars, but we're interested in slowing car speeds on our roads?
I'm all for.
Is that possible, that some of us may actually not have part of an agenda?
The way I see this project's designed is not just slowing down traffic.
Okay.
You had that on Brand Boulevard.
So, it's speeding into, you just clearly said that you believe it's part of the agenda of some people, or that it's part of that greater agenda.
What I'm saying is, the way I see this project's done, and it's been said in here, I mean, you have to go through the whole thing, I didn't have time this week, but I'm more than happy to extract those language. Few places it indicates that we need to take people out of their cars, we have to, and who is we? I don't know.
So, can I address something too?
Go ahead.
Okay. For a very long time, we've talked about traffic in the city too. It's not just creating safe streets, but we have actually significant traffic problems. So, as we continue to build our city, we also have to look at ways that we're improving pedestrian capabilities in our city and people being able to use other transportation methods. And how this whole thing is being phrased, I mean, I have time and time against it, I don't know how to ride a bike, I don't ride a bike, this isn't about bikes, but, you know, if someone asks the question, would I want a city where my teenage nephews at some point can ride their bike to school? some point can ride their bike to school? Yeah, I would love that. You know, would parents want to feel safe when their kids are on their bikes and they don't have cars? And let's not forget about the people that actually don't have cars, you know? And so, for me, it's, it's, I mean, when we say multifaceted, it's not just about bike lanes. It's about how you, I mean, one of the things I wanted to bring up was for us to look at how we're, in some parts of our city, widening our, our sidewalks to make sure that it creates a better environment for people that want to walk. So, you know, to box this in, to box this in to, you know, some grander agenda of like bike lanes.
It's not, it's not grander agenda of bike lanes. It is, it is about, it's not about bike lanes. It's about, it's about implementing Class Four Bike Lanes that requires removing a traffic lane on every major street in the city. It started, it started from La Cressena Avenue, now it's continuing from Verdugo to Monterey, and on the other hand, it's from Colorado on Verdugo all the way to where we connect to LA, and this is going to continue. And why is it that, who, who doesn't want safe streets for kids to ride their bikes? We all do. But they can also ride on side streets. No one is looking at that because the, the, the movement is not about side streets, to have a connectivity Bicycle Master Plan that you can connect to every part of the city on, from the side street, secondary streets. It was always have to be on major roads. And I tell you, it's not building the city, it's kind of destroying it the way this is going.
Councilmember Garpetian, and Madam Mayor, I just want to say something. You know, to say that you're not for, you're not against children riding bikes, but then, you know, wrapping all this into a conspiracy theory tied to some sort of global agenda is, it absolutely is what you said. We can go back to, you, you said that this is part of a plan movement to take people out of their cars. Could it possibly be that some of that movement, or not that movement, but some of the rationale for some of us voting on this council is that when we see a bicyclist on the road, like you, like Councilmember Brotman, me in my car wants to make sure that I am not in any possible situation where I'm hitting you. To have a separation between me and my car and you and your bicycle is not a terrible thing, and I think most people in this city would agree on that. To make this an either/or issue is really making, you know, doing a disservice to the entire city and what we're trying to do. Now, you've had plenty of opportunity to state your case, you certainly have strong beliefs on this, and I appreciate the fact that you take the time to ask the questions that you ask. But I think that also, we need to be very clear that, as the mayor has stated, as others have stated, as previous council has, have tried to do, our responsibility is to make the city safer for everyone, including those people, again, who don't have cars, and do it in ways that balance everyone's needs. It's not necessarily perfect, perhaps, but at least it's an effort to try and have a safer city.
All right, can we, can we please move on from this?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, we do have two cards for this item.
We'll take them.
Alan Durham.
Mayor Satrian, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. Does there really need to be such a rush to hire a consultant to design alternatives to transform North Verdugo Road into a multimodal transportation corridor, given the following? Number one, the recent failure of the Brand Boulevard Demonstration Project. I've rarely seen such a level of opposition to a project by the residents of the city. And the city council voted four to one to remove this project after it was installed at a cost of approximately $2 million to the city. Number two, the impending construction of the La Cressenta Boulevard Rehabilitation Project. Why not wait for this project to be completed before moving forward on the, I'm sorry, the Verdugo Road design? I'm sure there will be many lessons to be learned from the La Cressenta Project that would be helpful in designing the North Verdugo Project. Three, at last week's council meeting, our city manager stated that a comprehensive survey will be going out to the entire community in the next few weeks, and this questionnaire will survey residents on many issues in Glendale, including issues related to the North Verdugo Road multimodal project. So, why not slow down and wait for more community input? Thank you.
Next is Mike Mohill. Mike?
All right, let's move on.
Mayor, that's the last card.
Thank you.
I do have to say something.
So, before you say anything, I'm just going to say, you know, my dad has a really good saying, "If you stop to respond to every rock that's thrown at you, you're never going to get to your destination." So, go ahead.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop at every rock. I'll just pick a few. But I do, I, there are a few things, I mean, I, it's difficult to move on. So, on the point that Mr. Durham just made, is there a rush to fix, fix safety problems? Or is there a rush to, to do this work, which is about pedestrian and bike safety and other things, also car safety? I don't know how many more deaths we want to see before we fix these problems. I mean, we had, we've, we've had many people killed, close calls, injuries on this corridor. Just, what was it? A year ago or two years ago, we had somebody right on the corner here, Broadway and Glendale Avenue, hit by a car going through the intersection, a pedestrian, killed. So, you want to wait and have more people killed? Is that what you're saying? I don't think that's what you want. I know you, I know that's not what you want. But we can't just dawdle on this stuff. These are issues that have been in front of us for years and years and years, and we've talked about making our streets safer. And when we want to start doing something, then all of a sudden, it's this bikers conspiracy, you know? We need to start fixing things. The community has been demanding that we slow traffic and we make our streets safer for everybody. Let's go ahead and start doing that. I'm really tired of all of this nonsense, all of this idea that somehow there's this great conspiracy, the 15-minute city, what are we going to do? Put like chips in everybody and not let them go out of their 15-minute block? I mean, there's all kinds of crazy stuff you hear. But no, we're trying to make the city safer, and Mr. Garpetian, multiple things can be true at the same time. You have to be able to hold two ideas in your head at the same time. Doing these things makes our roads safer. If you study best practices in modern transportation planning, you would understand this. At the same time that you're making streets safer for pedestrians, for bikes, and for other cars, you could also create more opportunity for people on bikes and people on foot to get around. And there are many people that want to get around outside of a car, they don't do it because it's very difficult and it's uncomfortable. And we want people, we want some of the 14% of Glendale households that do not own a car. I know it's hard to imagine, but there are 14%, according to census data, that do not own a car. There are many people that are elderly that cannot drive, like my mom, who's 92, she cannot drive, but she will walk from the, from the bus station to my house. Luckily, it's safe, okay? So, and there are kids that are too young to drive. So, there are a lot of people, and the idea is we're not forcing anybody out of their car. You want to drive, go ahead, feel free, drive as much as you want. What we want to do is we want to create an environment where people that don't want to drive can do so. And by getting people to make positive choices through carrots, that will potentially and hopefully reduce vehicle miles traveled. Because yes, if I do have an agenda, my agenda is that I would like to see more people biking, walking, and taking transit, because that reduces the number one source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California. Now, you might not believe in climate change, you might not care about climate change, you might not think there's anything we can do about it. I don't care. You know, I'm not interested in having that conversation. I'm interested in progress. I'm interested in making the city safer and more environmental and making it so that our children have a good place to grow up, and that's all I have to say about it. So, I will second the motion if it's been moved. I think we did have a motion, and second, and I'm done.
I just hope that you're not labeling, this is the problem, when you have a different opinion, you, you voice your opinion, they label you. You don't care about climate change, you don't believe in climate change. No one was talking about climate change here. When you have, what raises a red flag is when you have bike lanes on, on Ocean View, you're installing bike lanes on protected Class Four Bike Lanes. On Verdugo Road, and you're installing bike lanes on, on La Cressena Avenue, and you want to install bike lanes in Verdugo Wash, all in the same area, knowing that the number of people who ride their bikes on, on, on occasion is not even close to occupy one. All you have to do is take a look at Ocean View and see what the numbers are. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to say we don't need any safety in the city. I mean, we're just playing the victim most of the time to make a point, but it's, it's, you have to listen to the residents, they've, they're already spoken, they voiced their opinion, and they will voice their opinion on all of these issues. But again, four bike lanes on four different streets in the same area when there, you don't see that many cyclists, it's not that the children didn't want to do it, wanted to do it and there was no room. Ocean View is there, Glenox is there, parts of Dryden is there, Broadway has, there are many streets that have bike lanes, and I want to, I want, I am for bike lanes, it's safer for me to ride maybe. When you attack every single major road, then there's a problem with that. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, I hope then you will be supporting the bicycle plan moving forward so we can actually have a network of your suggestions that have to do with side streets, Mr. Garpetian.
There is no side streets in the bicycle.
No, they're actually working on all the routes now, which you did not support.
Yeah. No, 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 I didn't support the bike lanes on 52 miles of protected bike lanes. That's what I didn't support.
That's not what it was.
Take a look at it.
Okay.
Mayor and councilmembers, was there a motion on this item?
Yes, there was, and a second.
And I seconded that motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
No.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Alsedirian?
Yes.
Next.
Next item is CEW Public Works regarding authorization of amendments to the Professional Service Agreements, PSA, for professional engineering services for the South Verdugo Road Multimodal or Modal Improvements Project and the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Pavement Management Program, PMP, Implementation Project, continued from February 11, 2025 council meeting. One, motion authorizing city manager designated to execute contract amendment to PSA 8002114 with Bowman Infrastructure Engineers for Community Outreach and Additional Design Services Regarding Bicycle Infrastructure, increasing the contract amount by $122,692 and extending the contract time by 12 months. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a contract amendment to PSA 8002116 with NV5 Incorporated for an additional design services regarding bicycle infrastructure, increasing the contract amount by $57,700 and extending the contract time by 12 months. Three, resolution appropriation to appropriate funds for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 PMP Implementation Project.
I'll move the item.
I have one couple of comments to make. When you say bicycle infrastructure, what does it mean?
Councilmember Garpetian, bicycle infrastructure can entail many things related to bicycles. It could entail the video detection that we talked about on the prior report that detects the bicyclists. It can entail dedicated facilities, bicycle lanes, that is. So, Class One bicycle path, that's an, that's an off-street path dedicated fully, such as the Verdugo Wash example, potentially. Class Two bicycle lane, that is a bicycle lane on the street in its, in its own dedicated lane. Class Three bicycle boulevards, which are modified streets to decrease speeding and increase, increase, encourage bicycle transportation. Then there's the Class Four facilities, protected facilities, there's various protected facilities, there's raised actual physical barriers, curbs, what have you, and then there are buffered Class Four facilities, which is a painted median, essentially. I may have missed a couple, but that's essentially the gist.
Thank you so much. And I want, and I'd like public to understand what does, what does that mean when you say bicycle infrastructure? It's not just the bike lanes, there are many other things that comes with it. The Verdugo Road from Colorado all the way down to, I think it's Maple or what have you.
It's slightly south of Maple, city of LA, but your boundary.
Right. So, that is a Class Four Bike Lane proposed?
The proposal is not necessarily only for Class Four. Class Four is being looked at because there are no other types of facilities that can potentially be looked at there. Class Three sharrows, which was the standard prior possibility, are no longer applicable due to an assembly bill that was recently passed, for speed limits on certain streets, 30 miles per hour or more. Class Two facilities will also be looked at, but Class Four is the ultimate safe, safer facility than the Class Two, decreased level of bicycle and traffic stress on the corridor. It's also a draft recommendation in the upcoming plan, so we want to make sure we get it right and look at every possible opportunity and alternative before we make a final decision, before you make a final decision.
Okay. And there is no repurposing, right? Is there a, not repurposing, repaving the streets in wall?
Yeah, this, the majority of our capital and firm projects begin because they need to be repaved.
Okay. And here is the, that's all, one comment I have to make here, I voiced my opinion. It says, because there is, since this project does not require lane repurposing of any of the project locations, public outreach for this project will occur at approximately 90% design plan completion, and that is a problem.
So, if I may clarify?
Go ahead.
The, the report is asking you to act on two motions and one resolution. The second motion is related to a separate project. It's related to the Fiscal Year 2223 Pavement Management Program Implementation Project. That's where you're reading that text from. And as part of that project, there's several corridors highlighted in the exhibit that are eligible for Class Three bicycle boulevards. And if you recall, the Class Three bicycle boulevard does not require repurposing or removal of any travel lanes. So, that one is just for that project, and that's mainly located in the South Glendale neighborhood.
No, I understand. So, even, even if it's for repurposing or type three bicycle boulevards, people need to know. I mean, when we design a project up to 90%, same thing happened with La Cressena Avenue. We designed the whole thing and then went back to them and said, "Well, this design is voted for, it's budgeted for, and we have the funding." And also, what about that 60% design completion? It says in the very first line, "The project is currently 60% design completion, corridor alternatives."
So, Councilmember Garpetian, that's for the South Verdugo Project?
Right.
And that is a fairly intensive project. It has multiple elements to it, it has a very large sewer element to it, so that's the reason why the design completion is a little bit further along. And at this point, the consultant, Bowman, has developed alternatives for public input and feedback, and then survey before we come back to the commission and the council for a decision on a alternative moving forward, that'll also consider the citywide survey that is currently in the process from what Public Works understands.
So, basically, the resident, because as I said, if I'm not mistaken, it's a residential street, there's a lot of houses or duplexes on that side of Verdugo, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct? I, I don't remember, but do they, do the residents know, do the businesses know that this is coming or not yet?
So, so the motion to move forward, increase the contract amount, is going to allow us to give the notice to proceed to the consultant to move forward with these public outreach notifications and the whole public outreach process.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move, what is it, eight?
I'm sorry, but we do have some public comments on this item.
I'm sorry, but we do have some public comments on this item.
Okay, well, I'll just put the motion in, so it's, it's in eight, C, one, two, and three.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Our first public comment is by Alan Dish.
City Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak uninterrupted. I just want to mention two, two more things. Sorry, yes. First is about democracy, if I may, that maybe we should turn around Lincoln's saying, you know, it's a foundation for our democracy, that you can fool some people all the time, all the people sometimes, but you cannot cheat, deceive all the people all the time. I think basically you can, and that doesn't mean I'm not supporting this measure, no. But my problem is with manipulations and so on that go on today, like, I'm, that's why I'm skeptical of doing surveys and so on. So, yes, we need road safety, but, there's a but, which is that we should be careful about gentrification. This I would like to insist on, yes, progress, but always be aware of what, there's a dead bird usually, like, with every progress, that's my skepticism. There's this nice book I read, Anthropology of Los Angeles, which has a chapter about bicycle anthropology, which looks at the experience in East L.A., Boyle Heights. Like, on the one hand, there were positives but also negatives, so let me just list some of these. On the one hand, many marginalized groups assume that city investments are not intended for them. This is because federally funded urban revitalization projects have tended to continue rather than disrupt the marginality of racialized neighborhoods. So, within the bike and generally, many environmental movements, suburban segregation's effects are visible in the silence around race. Now, the good news, it's that economic change can either erase a community's struggles and assets or community cultural wealth can be recognized and preserved. So, there are dangers and positives, like, especially with the Verdugo Corridor. It's absolutely crucial to take into account who lives there and so on. It's Latino, Armenian, it's a diverse neighborhood and so on. Communities experiencing, my last point, gentrification, have something attracting outside attention that can also be a resource for internal cohesion. So, that's my point with Brand, North Brand. Like, it highlighted, it's a nice area and so on, people wanted to defend it against bike lanes. But at a certain point, difficult decisions are made, and if we don't like it, we can vote you out. So, let's go with it, thank you.
Our next public comment is by Mike Mohill. And the final comment is by Ramela Inagi.
Hi, council, mayor. No, I just want to bring a statistical fact to your attention. One of our friends' father passed, he got into accident while biking. So, just want to know that, there's another statistics to this, all this fiasco, thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Asadrian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is eight D, Police Department, regarding tow contractor requests for proposals and restructuring of tow districts. When resolution adopting the police department's request for proposals for official police towing services, decreasing the number of districts and authorizing the city clerk to advertise for proposals.
My colleagues need a report?
I don't.
I don't.
Do my colleagues need a report? No? Do you have any questions that weren't?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just one comment, something I brought up in the briefing, and I just want to get on the record and hopefully include in the direction on this item, which is to really continue to do the work you're doing to shift time spent on these towing incidents and waiting for the towing vendor to come from our sworn officers to our P S Os, our, what are we calling them, police service officers, to our police services officers, so that we are not using our highest paid and maybe most, I was gonna say valuable, not that the P S Os aren't valuable, but but our sworn officers are in pretty short supply, and they can only, there are certain things that only they can do. So, if we can take them as much as possible away from things that other staff people can do, that's a good thing. So, I really would, would like to see you continue to do more of that. With respect to this issue, you know, the towing, waiting for the, for the vehicle to arrive, et cetera, et cetera.
Certainly, yes, we're not exactly where we want to be with that program, but we're certainly moving in the right direction. We had interviews, in fact, today to expand that, so we're headed where we want to be, and we look forward to growing it.
That was it.
All right, well, I'll take this opportunity to publicly congratulate you outside of the swearing in.
Thank you very much.
And promotional ceremony, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Motion was me.
Oh, I thought you meant, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asadrian?
Yes. And I see our traffic. Okay, I did have a short conversation, I know this item just moved, but I did have a conversation and noted the same things I noted last time the tow company issue came up and looking at the rates and making sure that's a fair system, and they're not overcharging people that are trying to get their cars out. All right, next item.
Next item is item eight E, City Attorney, regarding extension of nominating period for boards and commissions. One motion extending nominating period.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I don't think we did.
No.
Wait a second.
We did vote. Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote on the timing of it, as to how long.
Do we have a roll call on that?
No, we have.
We had a motion in a second.
Oh, we did, we did have it, yes, yes, we voted on it.
It went so fast.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we?
For the record, I'm a yes.
Okay, look, seeing no objections.
No, we did vote. We did, we did.
All right. Nodding her head, yes.
I was gonna say yes for the first time tonight, but.
So, we didn't?
Said I was going to say.
All right, okay, so you were gonna set a time limit?
Did you finish reading this item into the record?
Yes, I can read it again.
Do you write it into record?
Okay.
I hadn't set a time, it was just requesting an extension, but I don't know what my colleagues would think would be a sufficient amount of time. I'm fine with four, six weeks, either one should do.
I think one month is okay.
Look, we've been at this, I mean, we've been monkeying with this whole commission appointment thing for a good two years, but we've, in this current iteration, it's been five months that we've had to get together and decide who we want to nominate, five months. And I think it's kind of embarrassing, so I don't know how many we have left. I know I have five left, five panels that have yet to determine, or not five panels, yeah, five, five panels, we could say, where there are still open seats. I don't know how many there are in total, but for my own part, I'm not really interested in extending. But if we are gonna extend, the most I would want to do it is two weeks. I think we should come back at the next meeting in two weeks, and we should put our nominations on the table. And if we can't do it, then the following week, bring everything back, have the full council vote. I mean, what is it gonna take for us to figure this out? That's right.
Okay. I thought we were gonna do, we were looking at thirty days.
Thirty days, four weeks, I'm fine with that. And what I would say to Councilmember Brotman, I don't disagree that the system currently in its current iteration isn't perfect. Obviously, I was a advocate for keeping it on the original panel system, but where we are right now, I am, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to and interview a lot of the candidates. And we are doing this from scratch, which is what caused some of the work overload, to be able to have conversations and interview candidates that have applied. So, you know, I will take it upon myself, I will take the blame myself for not having been able to carve out the time to be able to do this. I've said this time and again, that all of us up here have different priorities in our life, and council, and serving on council is one of the handful of priorities that I try to balance in terms of my work, life, and public service. So, I would ask my colleagues to at least indulge me with a four-week extension versus what Councilmember Brotman is requesting.
I think by end of March, because next week we don't have a council meeting either, and then this weekend we have a convention to go to. We have other, you know, lives as well, you know, and I think by end of March will be sufficient enough.
Okay. Are we okay?
End of, last meeting of March, I don't know what our schedule is end of March, if not, first meeting of.
I can speak to that, so we're dark on March 25th, which is the last meeting of March. So, March 18th would be thirty days anyway, that gives you.
April, no, first meeting in April.
April 1st.
April 1st.
So, I don't know.
I think that will give us enough time.
I'm fine with that, and I'm, and I'm happy to make that motion for it to be completed by March, for it to be completed. Continue until April 1st.
But can I, I just, I just want to be clear, so April, you said April what, 1st?
First.
So, April 1st comes around, and that's our last chance to put in nominations. So, if a nomination hasn't been put in on April 1st, can we then take all the remaining seats and make a decision on them on April 1st?
That's up to the council, if you want, if you want to have that agendized in conjunction with that, we can certainly do that. Keeping in mind, though, that April 1st, you'll be putting, those panels will be putting last nominations, those will have to come back the next meeting, so what you might want to do is.
We make March 18th the last day, that's the last meeting before April 1st, right? March 18th to put the last nominations down, and then?
No, April 1st, I think, we need time, I, Councilmember Brotman and I, we have only one remaining. But with Mayor Asadrian and Councilmember Kasakian, I have several of them that we need to spend time to interview and to make the right choice and agree on one commissioner. So, April 1st is my thing, I will support that if it's.
So, April 1st for nominations to be in, and then the following meeting, if we don't have the nominations in, then can we bring anything that's, that's remaining and just, and just hold an open vote?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
So, the motion is for nominations to be made no later than the meeting of April 1st, and any outstanding appointments will be made by the council's hall on April, I think it's April 15th.
Okay. Roll call.
Second, I'll second it.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asadrian?
Yes. Next.
Next, our item 12, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. A Councilmember Brotman's request to agendize a discussion on incentives, assistance, and education to reduce plastic waste, including outreach to restaurants to develop an incentive program, a certification program, a bulk buying program, a reusable foodware service, and an education program.
Mr. Brotman, this was, I recognize I wasn't here during the last meeting, but when I saw the agenda, these were all things that I had put in as part of the direction when that item had come, like, literally item by item, as it's listed here. So, I'm trying to figure out why this is on here, because the direction to staff was to come back with all of these items.
That's not my understanding, my understanding is that the direction to staff was just to look at two things, a bulk buying program, a cooperative bulk buying program, and a reusable foodware service provider.
I said incentive programs and whatever else you guys can come up with, so.
Well, if it is, I'll let staff confirm, but what I, so what I, because I reached out to the city manager, I didn't want to blindside him, and I said, as I've been thinking about it, I want, you know, I want us to take, take an approach that focuses on the carrots, not the sticks, which I think is what I heard from my colleagues. And I thought, you know, five things, one is we get, we get either this consultant or another consultant to sit down with a select group of restaurants, representative restaurants, and understand at a micro level what the cost differences are so that we can develop a robust incentive program for voluntary action. That was number one, I don't think that that was explicitly set out as a direction to staff, and I'm getting a head in agreement.
Yeah, Mayor, Sergeant Member City Council, just to clarify, you're both are correct. The discussion and direction previously to staff was to look into potential incentives. But what Councilmember Brotman has added to incentives are just what he listed, and on a voluntary basis, no enforcement will be conducted.
Right, so I'm just fleshing it out, so if I could just go through the things and, you know, and if, and if staff says that's already on our, part of our mandate, then fine, we don't need to do anything. But I just want to spell out, can I just say what the other ones are?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, that was one of them. The other one was some kind of a certification program for restaurants that do eliminate single-use plastics, like a plastic-free restaurant promotional plaque that they could put on their window, and we can put the names on our website and say, look at these, these guys, go, go visit these restaurants. The third was, yes, the cooperative bulk buying program. The fourth was the reusable foodware service provider, which, yes, were already on the, on the table. And then the last one was really looking at a more robust education program and taking a close look at what Burbank does with their Waste Warriors, that they, they really do a great job, and trying to replicate something like that here. So, those were five things, I understand there's some redundancy with what we discussed, but I want to make sure it's crystal clear that those are the, at least those five things are gonna come back to us.
At least for me, when I was making my comments, you know, for me, education was kind of all encompassing during the entire conversation. And then the other items were already part of that, so if staff's, you know, I don't think you need anything. My only, I think where we had some, like, difference of opinion, and I don't know where we landed on, was there was a conversation that we would need to hire a new consultant. And to be frank, I, we have a full-time staff member and plus in the Sustainability Office who could be doing this outreach. And I, so where I have an issue is I'd rather take that hundred thousand dollars and give it to restaurants and help them move into that space than hire another consultant when we actually have the staff member in-house. I, like, with all due respect, with all due respect, it took a year and a half for that item to come. I'm still upset that it took so long, and the outreach that was done was just abysmal, and I'm not gonna like.
Mayor Satchin, yes, I agree with, all due respect, please, I have to state that staff have other things to do, was this wasn't just the only thing that the Sustainability Office was working on. And outreach was done by a consultant, but it wasn't done by staff primarily.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to hire another consultant when we have in-house staff that also both were paying, but are, they're on our payroll. I don't know if it means, you know, you as a city manager, looking at what other things the staff member has on their plate and figuring out, you know, what comes when.
Most definitely, again, they have a full plate, and depending on the level of outreach, again, we have gone through an extensive outreach program as part of this plan. But again, it depends on what kind of, what level of outreach council desires. The other thing that wasn't part of the initial direction was this reusable foodware service. I don't recall that being part of the.
Oh, yes, that was, that definitely was, that was, I mentioned that there's a company, I gave the name, R Cup, and they've changed their name now, but they provide a service for restaurants that can't, that want to use reusables but don't have a dishwasher, no space for a dishwasher, whatever, and they'll come, and they'll bring them clean plates and clean silverware in the morning, collect them in the evening, wash them, bring them back the next day. And I wanted to try to see if we could get, recruit that company or some other similar company to provide a like service in Glendale for a restaurant.
Definitely can look into those kind of services, but we'll have to come back to council with the cost of such service.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of our business. Yeah, I'm thinking more of our business development team trying to recruit somebody, not that we would run it or we would pay for it, but, you know.
Okay.
But, and personally, I don't care, like, if, yeah, if it's staff, if it's, because I just wanna, I just wanna get this done. And I'm not talking about outreach to, like, hundreds of restaurants. I'm saying, let's just do a representative sample of different restaurants, large, medium, small. Some have multiple locations, including locations in Burbank and LA where they're, where some of these rules are in place, et cetera, et cetera. Sit down and really figure out what kind of, this was to the point of, how much money do we need for incentive programs? How, yeah, to figure out what we actually need, so that we can have a robust incentive program. That's all I'm looking for.
I, again, I just thought all that stuff was in there. So, yes.
I think one of the things that we, has to be done is just to talk to Restaurant Owners Association, because they have so many members in Glendale, they know what the needs are, they know how, what the difficulties are. I don't know, sometimes you bring clean plates in the morning, they may not have a place to put it in, or keep it, you know, the one, the dirty ones, what do they do with it? I mean, they know all the challenges of restaurants, and I just wanna make sure, again, that this is a voluntary program. If you approach a restaurant and they say, I'm not interested, we're not going to go back and forth and back and forth, voluntary program is fine, and I'm, I'm sure there will be so many restaurants who are interested in, in participating, but it has to be voluntary.
And that's, I repeated that many times, this week and last week. I'm talking about carrots, not sticks.
Okay. All for it. Cool. All right. What's next?
Well, we have to have Zach coming back.
Just a second.
Do we need a motion, Sergeant, or do we?
Actually, it's a.
Just to add to, to that.
65 items?
No, it's, I mean, it, it was already part of something that they were working on, so we're just getting clarification on additional items then. Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Do you need a motion or a second, or you're okay?
I think he'll, he was to take a vote and so that we can go on our official record of having direction on this, additional items.
The other one's not on an official record?
No, it is, but these are additional items that you've asked for.
Okay. Okay, then let's just make, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Next.
Next is Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor Asatrian, we have two cards and one caller at the moment. The first card is, uh, Joseph O'Hanlon. You have five minutes.
Thank you, representatives. I appreciate the time to speak to you. It's my first, first time here, so be patient with me. I'm here somewhat to talk about code enforcement, something that touches a lot of us in our, in our homes. I live in Glendale, of course. I live in the, in the Rossmoyn area, down in the flats, and I've called this little presentation Code Enforcement, or Lack Thereof, is how I'm titling it. We have been waiting since August 2024, this is one incident, but it goes broader, since to have a blatantly non-compliant fence which runs along the common property line we share with the neighbors who erected the nasty-looking vinyl fence. Repeated inquiries with code enforcement have resulted in frustration due to the granting of several one-month extensions of the deadline to fix the violation. Now, I know that's normal, you give some extensions, but multiple extensions have been given. So we escalated the problem through the enforcement hierarchy over the last six months since August, only to learn that the fence owners have been given now six more months, a six-month extension by the person at the top of the food chain, whose name happens to be Mr. Calvert. No reason for the delays have been shared with us, ever. This is not enforcement, this is appeasement. Code enforcement should be directed to set policies that people respect. No favoritism and full transparency. If someone can't fix the problem that they caused, I think we should know what the reason is, and not just like, I dog ate my homework. You know, it ought to be something legit, and, and those of us, not just me, impacted by others, this is like, just common courtesy. You know, they can't do this because, for whatever reason, there's been a death in the family. They've run out of money, but, you know, it leaves, it leaves us thinking that there's favoritism here, that if you say the right things or cry loud enough, you get your, you get your code enforcement problem handled. So I'd like to see that we bring this message to neighborhood services, specifically code enforcement, to say, let's put a little teeth in what we're doing here. Put some, you know, make it, make the enforcement part of code enforcement actually do their job. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for listening.
Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Romela Inagi. You have five minutes.
Hi, everybody. I, I, I have two issues to address tonight. One is this, this question, this regarding a forever housing project. There's this question that was asked by, by Mr. Brotman, that's how these people who are at a low, low income level being qualified for this, for housing projects. You asked this question before, and yet, if you have this, this question, I wonder how come you have gone your, done your research and got your answer? And the same question has been asked by Mr. Karpetian, that's how these people are being, being qualified for, for, for these projects, whereas they don't have this qualifying income. And yet, Mr. Alikasari wants to ask the, the staff to go and do research on this. That's how these, this is a very simple question. So I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna answer your question, Mr. Brotman, Mr. Karpetian, Mr. Kasakian. These people are being, they have sponsor. If, if they're in a lower income and they don't meet that qualification, the, the income qualification, they, they have supporters. Their family members support them, so they, they meet that requirement for that income limitation, Mr. Karpetian. That's, that's your answer. So, um, yeah, it's, practically, yeah, basically, I want you to answer two of your questions. These people, their family members qualify them, they support them financially for them in order to, to be qualified for, for those, for the housing projects. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, but I really don't want to hear this, that how come these people are being qualified? And second issue that I wanna address is regarding this real, real estate, realtor association that came here, and they show off their, their donations. If you wanna really donation, they usually don't come here and show off. And I feel, I feel that these people are bribing this council, which I, I believe, I believe it is true, and it's not, it's not a nice move on behalf of these people going to real estate, realtor association to come here and show off. It's not really nice. It's not, uh, it is not nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is on, on air. Beth Brooks, you have five minutes to speak. You're on air. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is my weekly exercise and facility to address the city council at this point, just to get it on record, I suppose. The first, mainly because I, I like to see the meetings and to see where you're spending the money, because you're certainly not giving it to help renters who are struggling. No matter what anybody says, it really doesn't matter to you. Bicycle lanes are more important for the possibly, you know, 1.5% of people in the city versus 66% of people in the city who rents, maybe half of them who are struggling and probably are paying between 30 to 50% of their income towards rent, but that doesn't matter to you. So, and just to let you know that instead, I'm gonna call every week, probably, or show up, but this will be addressed in a different way, either by, you know, putting people on the city council, who, or getting rent control passed, which, believe me, is now my life's mission, and I will get it done, or, or, you know, lawsuits that I won't tip my hand at this point, but there are potential, there is a potential for a lawsuit against the city at this point for, for certain things regarding not helping renters. And my other question is, you know, what are you planning to do with the really quite disgusting Brody Group who cut down the trees for the Glend, for the, for the, in front of the Glendale Garden Homes? That shouldn't there be some sort of injunction against them doing business in the city? I don't know what the proper legal term would be, but I would think that they shouldn't even be allowed to do business in the city. There's obviously something horrible about them. Why would you allow people like that to do business in the city? So really, that's, that's pretty much what I have to say, and possibly to the gentleman who talked about code compliance, I don't think that that's a problem with a, with a, with a fence. You know, I've had a good response from code compliance here, but it is possible, I believe, to sue a city for lack of code enforcement. They have, they have immunity from a lot of lawsuits, but I, I do believe that that may, maybe, you can have the lawyer, you could talk to a lawyer about that, but I do believe, because that's, of interest to me, as far as a lawsuit against the city for code, lack of enforcement for codes. And that's it. Until next week, when nobody gives a crap about what I say, talk to you next week.
Thank you. Our next caller is anonymous. You're on air. You have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. How are you doing, City Council? I wanted to talk about two things. First one I wanna talk about is what is the city of Glendale doing in regards to a lot of car accidents happening in the city of Glendale? Now, my question is, do you guys have officers patrolling in areas where there's the highest number of car accidents? That's one thing I would like to know. And what's interesting is that on Instagram, I found an Instagram channel called Only in Glendale. I don't know if you, council members, have heard of about this or not, but it shows that videos of too many car accidents happening in the city of Glendale, and I urge you to check it out. My second question is, what is the current building code in the city of Glendale when it comes to homes being built in high-risk fire areas? I wanna see if your, if you, council members have checked the current building code to see if it needs to be updated or not. Now, when it comes to homes being built in high-risk fire areas, what I've noticed is insurance companies are starting to deny canceled insurance coverage for homes being built in high-risk fire areas, because it's a huge loss for them. So my question is, what is the current building code when it comes to building homes in high-risk fire areas? Does the current building code say that homes being built in high-risk fire areas, the home has to be built with fire-resistant material? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final caller is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, I haven't, I haven't talked in oral communications in a while, but I will make things pretty frequently clear regarding people with disabilities. As a person with disability myself, a few things. First of all, in Jan, in January of next year, in the last week of January, I'd like the council to acknowledge a activist by name of Ed Roberts. He was an activist in, at UC Berkeley, who broke down barriers to make sure that he went to school, so I'd like to, that to be acknowledged. Second, of course, you know, February being Black History Month, I'd like to make sure that the, that the council acknowledges that during this month of Black History. Third, I'm gonna keep pushing the mayor and the members of the council, just like the previous, previous other callers would say about rent control and apartments. We need to have more accessible apartments. We need to have apartments, not just for low income, but also for middle-class people, such as just myself. Firstly, for example, like I said, I can't afford an apartment of $3,000. No, can I, can, it's, it's very hard to find an apartment that is, we also accessible towards my needs. The point is, I'd like to see more transparency within my city, and, you know, despite what some people say about fighting with the city, I'd rather not fight with them. I'd rather be volunteering my time, helping you guys to make, make the city of, Glendale city a better place, because I, I grew up in Glendale, and hopefully by, as God is my witness, I will, I will rest in peace here in Glendale. Thank you very much for, for your time, members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the last caller.
Do I have a motion, Sergeant?
Oh, Sergeant.